I'd like to call this meeting Lakewood City Council for Monday, August 5th to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Barth.
President.
Councilmember Bokey.
President.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whalen.
President.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. Now, would you please rise with me in a moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving overseas, followed by the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The agenda has been revised to include a presentation of proclamation recognizing Representative Christine Kilduff under the Proclamations and Presentations portion of the agenda, which is our first item of business. So if Representative Kilduff would please join me at the podium.
Okay, perfect.
Give you the mic in a few minutes. So this must be pretty important because we both got dressed up for it on a 92-degree day. We here in the Lake, City of Lakewood appreciate greatly the efforts that our state legislative team has made to bring our tax dollars back to Lakewood and also to address some important policy concerns and things like the title to Fort Stillicum Park. So you were unable to make the first formal proclamation presentation, and we're glad that you were here tonight to be able to be recognized. Whereas the City of Lakewood expresses its appreciation to the Washington State Legislature for their dedication to furthering legislative priorities and strengthening the partnership with the City of Lakewood, and whereas Senator Steve O'Ban, Representative Christine Kilduff, and Representative Maury Levitt of the Legislative District 28, and Senator Steve Conway, Representative Steve Kirby, and Representative Melanie Morgan of Legislative District 29, serving the citizens of Lakewood, have worked diligently in support of the City of Lakewood's 2019-2020 legislative agenda. And whereas legislators of the 28th and 29th District adopted a 2019-2021 operating budget, which appropriates $621,000 to the city for community policing partnership to help respond to calls for police service at Western State Hospital, and whereas legislators of the 28th and 29th District adopted a 2019-2021 biennial capital budget, which invests $500,000 to the city for Fort Stillicum Park trail access upgrades via the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program, and whereas legislators of the 28th and 29th District adopted a 2019-2021 biennial capital budget, which invests $500,000 to the city for Harry Todd Park waterfront improvements via the Aquatic Land Enhancement Account, and whereas legislators of the 28th and 29th Districts adopted a 2019-2121 capital budget, which provides significant investments in community projects in Lakewood, including $1,015,000 to the city for Fort Stillicum Park to replace dirt baseball infield's with turf baseball infield's, and $773,000 to the city for Springbrook Park for environmental restoration of Clover Creek and Springbrook Park expansion. Pause here for a minute to note that $1,015,000 appropriation for the infield's at Fort Stillicum Park was actually $15,000 more than we asked for, so good job. Whereas legislators of the 28th and 29th Districts collaborated with South Sound Military and Communities Partnership, SSMCP, South Sound Communities, and the City of Lakewood to allocate $500,000 from the 2019-2021 biennial capital budget towards resolving the encroachment issue with respect to the McCord Field North Clear Zone. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Lakewood Council, and on behalf of the City of Lakewood, tribute is hereby paid to legislators of the 28th and 29th Legislative Districts, Senator Steve Conway, Senator Steve O'Ban, Representative Christine Kilduff, Representative Steve Kirby, Representative Maury Levitt, and Representative Melanie Morgan for outstanding service dedication and commitment to the City of Lakewood, its citizens, and please join us in extending our appreciation for their public service. Proclaimed this 5th day of August 2019, Don Anderson, Mayor. So I'd like to present you with this proclam, copy of the proclamation and commit the always dangerous offense of giving the microphone to an elected official.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, and I realize this is the second time that this proclamation has been read here because I believe it was July 1st. I was not able to join you. I was actually scheduled to visit family in New York, but an uncle had passed away, so changed my flight to be there and actually support my 82-year-old dad through that process. So I thank you for having me back tonight. It was also wonderful to be out at beautiful Fort Stillicum just this last week or so ago to see concerts and appreciate that invitation. But Lakewood has so many gems, including Fort Stillicum, Harry Todd Park, and really you have a great team that works for you in Olympia that keeps in constant communication with us about the city's needs and priorities and you yourselves. All of the council members here do an outstanding job having us come to you both before the legislative session and after. But I'm really excited that we were able to make those investments in Fort Stillicum, at Wahop Lake Trail as well, and Harry Todd, and the new trail that'll be coming to Fort Stillicum. One other piece of legislation I think was super to get taken care of was Senator Conway's bill that makes sure that we resolve conflicts between local military installations and local government, and so we now have a bucket in the capital budget that we can help ensure that no conflicts occur, and that bill was worked very hard. I'm looking at Brianna here, as well as Shelley down in Olympia. So one last thing I'll mention, and happy to take any questions and don't want to take up too much of your time on the agenda. I know National Night Out is tomorrow night, so there's lots to do, but just within the last week or so, and I believe you received a copy of this from Mr. Caulfield today, did send a letter to the Attorney General's Office requesting an opinion on the question of release of individuals into the community, and three populations in particular, those who are not guilty by reason of insanity, those who are governed by the Involuntary Treatment Act, which is RCW 7105, and those folks coming off of the island, the Special Commitment Center. I think it'll be very helpful and instructive to the state and local government on the question of what does that landscape look like, what can be done. I think it'll be helpful in crafting future legislation. So once you've had a chance to take a look at that, would appreciate your thoughts when, and particularly once the opinion is out, which could be a few months, you know, would appreciate your thoughts on next steps. So wanted to bring that to your attention this evening, and once again, happy to answer any questions you have, and it truly is an honor to represent this wonderful community. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seeing no questions, I'll take my.
Go relax.
But I'm going to stick around for the Clover Park School District report. All right, thank you.
So as pre-announced by Representative Kilduff, our next item of business is the Clover Park School District report, and we have Director Carol Jacobs to give us an update.
Thank you very much. Before I actually start with my formal presentation, I want to say thank you, Representative Kilduff, for all of the support that we know we get from your office regarding so many issues that the school district must deal with. So thank you very much. You're always attentive and very welcome to hear our concerns, requests, and attaboys also, so thank you very much. School is starting, three weeks to go, and the buses will be running, and kids will be back in school, and I was explaining to, just talking to Representative Kilduff, I love the first day of school. It is the most fun day of the year, maybe besides Christmas, but it is the most fun. Those kids are ready, teachers are ready, the excitement is so fun. I love being at schools, in the schools on the first day because it's just electric. So that is coming. One of the things that we'll be doing is, of course, we'll be having, offering full-day kindergarten in each of our district's 16 elementary schools. Kindergarten teachers in each elementary school will conduct family connections conferences with our kindergarten families from Wednesday through Friday, August 28th and 30th. So the kindergartners will not be going to school with the 1th through 12th grade because those teachers will be conducting conferences with the families, and primarily listening to the parent, tell me about your child. What do I need to know to best serve your child? So that's a really exciting time for, of course, the kindergarten parents and the teachers to get to know them. They will then start school with the rest of their peers on Tuesday, September 3rd. School supply lists, as school tradition is, are posted, and one of the things that we've done continuously for the last, I believe, three years, we have tried to par down our school supply list, and that was something that was started by former Superintendent LeBeau because her philosophy, and we, the board totally agrees with it, this community is incredibly generous and kind to our schools by passing their levis, so it is our responsibility to provide the basic needs in a classroom. I believe several years ago, the list was quite long, and we've cut that down to basic things that a child needs, and so we try not to make that a burden to any student or any family that does come to our schools. This last Saturday was the Caring for Kids Ready to Learn Fair, and as it would be, it's probably the first Saturday, first Saturday of the month of August that I've been home, so I decided to go over. I can only say that as I walked, as I walked in, parking was in the back, and I parked my car, and I walked up, the line was literally to the parking lot, and I got there at 10:00. It opened at 9:00. People were in line the night before because they know that this is the way to get their kids ready for school. As I walked in, West Pierce Fire was giving out free helmets, sizing them, making kids , if they're riding bikes, the kids will be safe. You walk through the hall a little bit, and here were free haircuts for kids getting their back-to-school cuts. Walked a little further, and each child got a backpack, and depending on what grade they were, and they had this little piece of paper, they got a notebook. They got a thicker notebook for high school, thinner notebook for elementary schools. They got, they got pencil pouches. They received spiral notebooks, crayons, markers, pencils, glue sticks, tissues. Each kid got a box of tissues. To say that I was almost, I was just overwhelmed. I've never seen such, it was just overwhelming that this community, again, totally supports our kids. When you, Diane had everything outside the commons, and then you went into the gym, and during the course of the year, she is always collecting something. We all know Diane, and by God, she's going to be beating the drum for us. Were clothes that she has collected during the course of the year. Many of them were, she does all the round of schools on the last day of school and picks up the lost and founds. Everything is washed, it's dried, it's put away, it's sized. Families were able to come in and get clothing, coats, shoes for their kids that they otherwise wouldn't be able to afford. The thing that was so overwhelming and caring for me is the fact that in this line of so many people on a Saturday morning when it was warm, the kindness and the appreciation of the families. It truly was overwhelming. There was no pushing, there was no fussing. People were grateful to be able to come and receive what they need for their kids to go back to school. I did mention to Marty Schaefer, our president, that next year, somehow, some way, starting with our SELT group, people need to witness the true goodness of the people of Lakewood and how we do take care of our kids. So Diane, literally, God bless her, and she has another one tomorrow at Springbrook because many of the families from Springbrook can't get to Clover Park High School, so she'll do another giveaway tomorrow, same thing, and plus she feeds them too. Kids all got lunch, they had hot dogs and chips and cookies and water, and I'm still overwhelmed at the graciousness. And then there'll be a third one on Thursday at Telecom, same thing, backpack, notebooks, spirals, pencils, pens, crayons, glue sticks, whatever it takes for a child to go to school with the materials needed to have a successful year. So it's, if you're out tomorrow at Springbrook, it's totally overwhelming, certainly worth time for you're there. Mary, thank you very much for an incredibly successful Summer Fest. Clover Park was very proud to be a part of it. I don't know if this is a warning or an excitement, but Ron's got plans for next year, and he's working on what's the best way to represent Clover Park School District to the thousands of people who are there. So thank you very much for including us and for that incredible party. One of the things that's kind of unusual to Clover Park School District, this last week, we've completed our Warrior and Lancer 9th Grade Transition Programs. The schools are open in the morning, and incoming 9th graders, all of them, not just children who are struggling, but all 9th graders are welcome to their school for the week. And during that time, the purpose is trifle. One, they learn about the school. They don't have to be there that first day as a freshman walking into this big building not knowing where to go. We all kind of remember that fear, if you will. They also get a chance to find out what, have conversations about what the expectations are. Most importantly, they make a relationship. They see that visual thing of, they go there the first day, and they may recognize someone that they saw the transition connecting them to another person, and we know that that relationship piece is so very fundamental for student success. So both programs just assist that new, new 9th grader. One of the things that studies has shown, and I'm going to go off script here a little bit, 9th graders, if they should fail two classes their 9th grade year, the probability of them graduating on time drops incredibly. So if this is another way to get those kids engaged in school, ready for school, wanting to be there, it probably is another big piece of us in our 89% graduation rate that we're so proud of. Our school safety zones, of course, when the buses are running, the lights are flashing, and I know that's been a little confusing for summer school because people think school's not in. Yeah, we had summer school, and in those areas, we did have the buses. So our summer school will be going. I know some schools have gotten some new signage and some new lights, so I think every school will have their lights flashing. Several schools in the course of the summer had new safety, safety protocols put up for when you go into a building. You won't be able to just open a door and walk in, you need to ID yourself, the secretary will recognize you, and then you can, you all enter the building. So nobody should be in. I think we're through with most of them. I don't think all of our schools have it yet because it is a process to go through, but you will not be walking into a Clover Park School District unannounced or unknown, and that was just, you know, with everything that's going on in our world, we have to do everything we can for the safety of our children. I'm just going to briefly share with you some of our new administrative changes, and the thing is, is as you all know, Mr. Ron Banner, our new superintendent, met with his first group of staff. We had, for one week, we take our brand-new hired staff, our teachers, and we spend one week of, this is what it is to teach in the Clover Park School District, the teaching and learning's there, curriculum's there, all areas, so that when they come to school in three weeks, they're going to know what our expectations are and what their concerns are, and it's a really way to integrate them to what the curriculum is, what the standards are. And so I got to greet them, and Ron addressed his first group of teachers today. He was very excited about it. So Christie Smith, who was the Assistant Superintendent, one of the Assistant Superintendents for Elementary Schools, she has now taken on the Instructional Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Program, and Megan Eklund, Megan Eklund was the principal at Lakeview. She now has moved into the Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Schools. Lisa Boyd, we're very proud to say, has returned back to Clover Park School District. She went to a neighboring school district and found out that we're still pretty good and came back, and I personally love it when someone comes back. So Lisa Boyd will be the principal at Oak Brook this year, so it's, that's a very exciting time for us. As always, we ask you to please follow and like the Clover Park School District. There's updates, and they'll be coming more and more as certainly we get closer to school and then once school starts. So our first day of school will be Wednesday, October 28th. The Washington Kids Family Connection Conferences, our kindergarten conferences, August 28th through the 30th, and our first day of school for kindergartners is September 3rd. Finally, our 2019-2020 board goals, I don't, you know, they haven't changed much, but I would like to share them with you, just as a reminder, our student growth and achievement. With that, we are adding the word success because achievement is great, but what defines achievement, it may not just be a test score. There's other measures of success that we are truly looking at, saying, you know what, this student is coming along, and that is a success for him. Parent and community engagement, communication with all of our stakeholders, supportive learning environments for all of our students, staff retention, recruitment, professional development, and our fiscal's responsibility. The other note I would say is on our staff retention and recruitment, it was a very, it was a smaller crowd than we usually have for our brand-new staff. It's because we lost probably fewer teachers last year. One of the things that I've asked for, and they're doing it, teachers leave because they retire. They deserve that retirement. We have, we have probably several, half of our staff leaves because they're military, and with the military transitions, and then, of course, other teachers moved to other school districts. So I've asked, I don't have a problem with that, but don't, let's not clump all of our teachers that are leaving in one category. We really are a three-category school district. So we look at that, saying who's retiring, who's military, and who's, you know, who wants to be closer to home or what have you for other reasons. So we're good to go. One of the things that the Clover Park School District Board of Directors, and I want to say this to the entire city council, we do look forward to our continued collaboration. I think we've moved forward, and I think we're at a pretty good place right now with our Joint Use Act and our joint council board meeting that we had in February. So we look forward to continuing that partnership and, you know, making it deeper and stronger because where there's a city, there should be the school district, and where the school district is, there should be the city. I think we're inextricably joined, as our former mayor Doug used to say. So that's it for August. Is any questions, comments, discussions?
Any questions, Mr. Whalen?
Thanks, Carol, for coming and for the nice report. On the Caring for Kids issue, I understand that Ms. Formosa has been or was, is currently looking for space. Do you know where she is with regard to that, and how might the district assist?
Very good question. I have an idea, and as Ms., we were asked that, Ron told me, he was asked that, there's a plan, and you have to trust me that there's a plan because it really can't go public yet. But believe me, we are not going to put Diane out on the street. We can't do that. So, no, Diane, Diane, and Diane knows, and there's a plan, and it will be addressed. She will be taken care of.
I appreciate that because as you articulated very nicely, the impact of her program is immense.
How would we start school with our kids without her? I really truly don't know how we would start without her. And then continue on. I mean, she said she's getting done with her Ready to School Fair, and then she's, then I've got to turn around and get ready for school to open. School's going to open, and I'm going to have to have somebody with some shoes. I've got to bring somebody some clothes, and that's just her mantra. That's who she is. Jim.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Hopefully, there's a good transition plan too because she can't do it forever.
Oh.
A very kind-hearted soul.
I know, and we're all saying Diane, you know, cloning might work, but we don't know. It's like, I don't, I don't know anybody that's got the energy of that woman, that's for sure.
Right. Well, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
Ms. Branstadter.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I had a question of the, that given the high number of military families that come and leave the district every year, the, there is legislation that opened the door to families being able to sort of, I'll call it distance, pre-register their students, to be able to come so that there's, whether the students particularly appreciate it or not, there's no time loss of getting them into school to be able to go and do that. But where is the district on implementing some processes and procedures and of working with particularly JBLM on finding a way to let families in Europe or Texas or someplace else know that that option is available for their children when they're on their way to Lakewood?
You know, Director Branstadter, I am so glad you asked that because I'm probably the one board member that knows, and I'm not being bragging, but I was on the SET study, the Secondary Education Transition Study. It was done, gosh, I am the worst person at time, but it probably was done, I bet, 15 years ago. We were one of the seven signees in the world to be a part of that SET study, and it was, these are the things that's going to help transition our students and not be an impairment to them, especially at the secondary level, which is primarily high school. So the military has, is really the owner of putting that, putting that word out, if you will. Part of that thing is also, we were the very first district in the state that said, if you are a military child and you've had your state history from wherever, Texas, wherever they came from, you don't have to come here and take another state history, which is why we then moved our Pacific Northwest history to the senior year so that you don't have the kids who, maybe they came from Europe and they didn't have it, or came from Korea or what have you. You've got these seniors sitting in a class with freshmen doing PMED up for Pacific Northwest history. So we, that, that is a part of the transition. The other one is, you know, students can even try out for cheerleader and choir and all of those things online, and we have had cheerleaders be successful at Lakes High School with that online tryout. They can register online. Now, the military knows this, the school knows it. I don't know, I don't, I'm going to have to tell you, and I will see how it is, in fact, we're, we're getting families to go navigate that. We do know that we have a lot of families coming asking for IB because a lot of military families, that's one of the connecting educational programs that school, that parents look for because they know that they can go in a lot of places in the world and have that. So we are a part of that. We were the first, one of the first seven signees, and I believe most communities that have military bases and are now a part of the SETS program. One of the other things is, if you're a military guy and you happen to have a kid who's going to be a senior next year, you don't have to transfer without it being, impacting your service. Now, you might be in the Now, you might be in the 3% of, usually it's officers, whose job is so specific they have to move. But it's less than all 3% of all high school kids who are transferring now. So you don't have that senior transfer of students. So there's really a lot of work that has been done, and it's almost operating procedure now. It's pretty smooth.
Thank you.
Did that answer it? Because if you know of somebody that's not, I would suggest you contact the superintendent's office and ask them because the everyday intricate work is...
My expectation that it's a December, January, February thing, which is sort of a secondary period of time of movement, particularly for a lot of families, whereas service member might have been in school, and then it's going for the new year to a new piece to do that, you know, less impactful for families that move during the summer and are physically here now with still some weeks to go. But as we get into the school year, you know, that arriving with a block of time
Sure.
is more problematic as it was years ago for, for my son when we did that.
Well, and when the, when the SET study...
So, you know, having, having a smooth transition, have a smooth process to navigate, as you say, you know, is, is important for JBLM to understand, for the districts around JBLM to understand. And there's maybe a subcommittee in the Southside Military Community Partnership that ought to be looking to see if there's some, have some commonality in practices amongst districts.
Well, I know the common, the area, the school districts around us, I know Bethel, Stellicum, Lacey, I know they're also all signees of the, of the, of the SET study. And it really is, it's, it's just an integral part. Now, when the SET study was done, we weren't doing FaceTime on our phones. We weren't doing, you know, the internet wasn't quite what it was. They're all doing it online, face-to-face with counselors, and, and they're having those conversations now. So it is pretty exciting to make that smooth transition for those students. It's what's good for students. So...
So staying with the military theme for a minute, I was...
If I can.
Happy to see Superintendent Banner and Director Schaefer at the Garrison Change of Command.
Mm-hmm.
I think that, that contact is really important, especially with your six schools. Has there been any movement to have at least a new stu, new teacher orientation to the base? I'll give you the anecdote. My wife taught in a, in a DuPont school where 70% of the kids had a military connection. There were three people on staff that had any connection with the military in their adult life. And it was a foreign society to them. But when, when you took some of those people and you got them on base with an orientation tour, and they see what the kid's mom and dad do, they learn a bit about what deployments and redeployments are, it, where they, you know, where they, where they live. And it, it, not only is educational, breaks down barriers and creates some understanding. And if, if there is such an opportunity, I think we can help facilitate that with some of our...
I will pass. I will, I know that there is some conversation during this week of new teacher training of military base. And I know that on the three days before school, the teachers that are on, that are teaching on the military base, and being that we have six schools on base serving our students and our families, we do try to place teachers there who are family, who are military affiliated and have some history or maybe their parents were, they were military. I know three kids out of, out of one of the schools, and, well, three kids, excuse me, they're, to me, they're kids, but they're teachers now. And, and they like being able to connect with those kids because they were one of those kids.
Yeah.
So we really do work hard at trying to place teachers if we can.
Seventy, 70% of the folks live off-base, so there's more, not in Lakewood per se, but off, collectively, they're more off-base than on-base.
Sure.
And those people may not have an idea that the Army and the Air Force are both over there.
Absolutely.
And so it, it...
One of the things that the high schools also do, they have the mentor-to-mentor program that really started out of, was part of the SET study, but also really started as making sure that that military kid who walks into a school talks to somebody no later than the second day they're there. Because studies show that if a kid eats, if a kid is at a school for three days and no one talks to them, they never go back into the cafeteria, they don't involve themselves in school activities. So the mentor, the peer-to-peer mentoring program at Lake, oh, Ignite, Ignite probably is what it's called, they really do try to connect a new incoming military kid with a in-town kid so that they can start having that connection immediately. The other thing I know that both the high schools know, you know, they lose, we really lose talented, good kids every year. That's just, that's just the way of life in Lakewood. But they also know that new talent comes in every year. So they look forward to it. So I do believe the kids are well-received. I know, this is a long time, when my kids were there, that was just part of the culture. The new kids are coming, and they're going to be on the football team and choirs, and they're going to be able to do those things. They really work hard to develop that culture.
Sometimes the kids, the kids are more resilient than the adults.
Absolutely.
But what I'm, what I'm seeing, I think I'm more concerned about is a, a grade school teacher not understanding why Johnny and Sally are going to Disneyland Wednesday in, in February.
Sure.
It's because Dad's going to be in Korea for a year.
Right. Right.
And there has to be, and, and why Johnny and Sally aren't acting, if you don't know about that, when they come back from this unplanned absence, why they're acting up. And it's, it's different than...
Absolutely.
...a continuing behavior problem.
Absolutely. I think, and I will check, I will, I will mention it to Superintendent Banner, and because of the fact that the six schools on base, we, I think they do a pretty in-depth, the three days before school, their lead days, they really do a pretty good job of, this is what our, these are what these kids, and, and, you know, think back when the, oops, think back when the Striker Brigade was being attacked. Quite frankly, we had the highest rate of discipline because kids, they were acting out, they were having lots of problems. So instead of treating it like discipline, you know, we had meant, like, Greater Lakes' mental health on board, we, we had more counseling because those kids needed more. So, you know, they're our kids.
Yeah. And I know the brigades are ready to cooperate and...
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. They, now that they're not being deployed as they were, brigades used to hot, you know, they used to all adopt a school. I know Evergreen, Evergreen School has been adopted by a brigade, and they want to come help. They want to be a part of our school. So it's, it's a good thing.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay.
So you have to take, good luck with this school year.
Oh, thanks.
Now move to the public comment section of the agenda. This is when any member of the public may make a comment with respect to any issue pertinent to the council, whether or not it is on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Yellow light comes on at 30 seconds. The red light comes on when your time is up. Please identify yourself by name and city, such as Paul Bulkey, Lakewood, Washington. First person who has signed up is Mr. Dennis Hagen.
Dennis Hagen, this is about Antifa violence. That was at our immigration center. These are congresspeople. If I only got to a Republican, Republican, of course, of course, wouldn't any congressman condemn violence? What is with the Democratic Party? What? I called Gary Hick, said, I haven't read all of them. Did you condemn it? This is the answer I got. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Which is no answer.
So all the people who have signed up for a public comment, and if that won't preclude your comment, if you wish to step forward to the microphone at this time, you may make public comment and ask you to stand behind the microphone and identify yourself. Is there anyone else who wishes to make public comment? Seeing none, I declare public comment closed. We now move to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of July 8th, 2019. B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of July 15th, 2019. C, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $2,417,797.69 for the period of June 15th, 2019 through July 19th, 2019. D, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $2,647,97.35 for the period of June 16th, 2019 through July 15th, 2019. E, motion number 2019-45, appointing 2019 to 2020 youth council members. And F, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of June 3rd, 2019.
Thank you. Is there any item which any council member wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
It's been moved by Mr. Simpson, seconded by Ms. Moss, that we adopt the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Whelan.
Just to point up order on item E, I would like to acknowledge the breadth and depth of the level of interest by youth in the community to volunteer for the Lakewood Youth Council. I'm really pleased at the level of commitment for that and the interest. I would recommend after we appoint the folks that we consider having some sort of small reception at a council meeting to be designated to welcome them to their position and to congratulate them on their service.
Some of us may think that that's because you want pizza, but...
Yeah, it could be. It could be. Pizza's always good.
The best way to convene a quorum of the youth council. Any other comments? While I'm favored, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posnay, motion carry. We now move to the regular agenda, ordinances. Ordinance number 17, 715. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 715, amending Lakewood Municipal Code, Chapter 8.76, relating to the park code.
For this, we have Ms. Dodsworth.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council. I'd like to share with you tonight the results of review by the Park and Rec Advisory Board. About every two years, they take a look at the park code, and they review many different topics and come up with potential recommendations for change. This year, they're providing recommendations for additions or change in the areas of metal detecting, geocaching, camping, smoking, and model aircraft. We did review this in a lot more detail with you at your July 22nd study session, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might still have regarding those topics.
Questions from council. Mr. Branstadter.
Thanks, Mayor. Ms. Dodsworth, you know, there's a lot of elements in the code, not just what we're looking to amend tonight to be able to go and do that. Could you summarize how we, how we enforce the elements within the parks code? What are the, the elements of how does that going and the extent to which we rely upon voluntary compliance as opposed to having to take incremental enforcement actions?
Sure. So to start off with, we utilize the code as the base for rules. We have rules that are general, rule signs that are in the park. Then we also sometimes have specific rule signs in specific areas so that those that are visiting a particular area would know what those rules are for a certain specific topic. But every park has a general rule sign that references the code so that if they wanted to look more into detail, they could. Regarding enforcing the signs, we leave that up to our police department. Our park volunteers and our park employees, they have the ability to share what the rules are, to sometimes emphasize what those rules are, but, but they don't enforce the rules. That would be something that the police department would do.
Any other questions? Just note for those of you who in attendance tonight that we did review this in some detail in prior sessions, and entertain a motion.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Moss, seconded by Mr. Branstadter, that we adopt ordinance number 715. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I like the work that has been done by Ms. Dodsworth and the commission, but I would like to make a motion, to make an amendment in Section 2 concerning smoking and tobacco use. And I'll ask my colleagues for baroncy that I may speak a little bit more lengthy than I usually do. When we last...
If, if you're going to offer amendment, please offer the amendment, and then...
Oh, the amendment is...
I'll call on you to speak to the amendment.
All right, I'm sorry, sir. The amendment is to read that no person shall smoke or vape in any of Lakewood's parks.
Section 2, it's on our page 103. Sir, a second to the amendment.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Simpson, seconded by Mr. Whelan, that we amend Section 2 of the proposed, of the current ordinance as indicated. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a discussion, a rather lengthy discussion, four years ago about smoking in the park, and we had a vote on it that led to the language that we have today. In the interim, the advent of vaping has made itself quite manifest. And while I am opposed to government trying or attempting to tell people how to live their lives, I am opposed when the perception of a city is at stake, the imagery, the look. And I believe that, that if we are going to, as I would like us to do, to prohibit vaping, then to be consistent, we must also prohibit smoking. It was suggested, and I want to thank Councilmember Branstadter for this, his commentary to me at one point, that perhaps we could allow, not allow smoking in the smaller parks, but allow it in the larger parks because it's, there's more air, there's more space. Where I have a problem with that, in all due respect, is it's in the largest park where we have our greatest and largest events. And that, to me, speaks to perception, to imagery, to how we look. And so I, I make this, this motion to strike the language as it is and to add what I have because I believe it was Christine Kilduff, who was standing where Ms. Dodsworth is right now, when she said Lakewood has so many gems. And she was speaking in reference to our parks. And so I, I think that a gem should shine as brightly as it can. And therefore, I, I would ask... And therefore, I would ask for acceptance of my motion to amend. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Mr. Whalen.
I was happy to second the amendment for purposes of getting some discussion going on this issue because we had somewhat of a robust discussion about four years ago on the topic. And I think I was probably one at the time that voted to ban smoking in the parks, if I recall. You know, I appreciate having the topic come back up again. I think adoption of a no-smoking policy is consistent in some respects with what we've done throughout the city with regard to other image and health-related issues. I would be the first to say, I hope we're not creating any sort of hypocrisy with the code provision that allows alcohol with proper permits in the park because it's, you know, choose your vice in a sense. But I'm one who advocated having the ability to have alcohol in the parks for special events and for Rotary Clubs and other such social service clubs to raise funds as appropriate for activities benefiting the city. So I throw it out there, and it dovetails a bit on Mr. Branstadter's comment about enforcement. Rules are only as good as the enforcement mechanism. And to the extent we rely on our police department to enforce the rules, as articulated by the Parks Director, I would recommend, if this is adopted, as the other code provisions may be adopted tonight, that we have certainly a friendly period of enforcement that involves much education as opposed to ticket writing. Because ticket writing sends a message that is akin to image as well as banning smoking in the park. We want to have a consistent image. Helpful, great place to live, work, and play.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was in support of this amendment four years ago. I'm in support of the amendment tonight. I do worry, four years ago, it was noodled in the Parks Board, the Parks Advisory Board, and then we had a robust discussion around it. I can't remember what their recommendation was four years ago.
Very strong.
But I do worry that a controversial issue like this, we make it like that quickly. But I do worry a little bit about the process. That I would appreciate that the Parks Board did what they did four years ago, but I don't think they wanted to touch it this time because I think we reversed their decision, if I'm correct. So I will be in support of this amendment, although I do I do have some concerns about the quick way. But I will note that Councilmember Simpson did mention to us a couple of weeks back that this was a possibility, so I'll be supporting the amendment.
So as a liaison of the Parks Board, with four attendance lately, but still with the liaison, and I can tell you that there was a very strong recommendation to ban it four years ago, and the position of the Parks and Rec Board has not changed. And they were happy to hear that we were reconsidering, or this discussion had come up. So while this may be a little bit abnormal in process, it would be merely a formality to send it to the Parks Board to bring it back because they have asked, is this the time to bring it back? Because we strongly believe that it should be banned in the parks. Mr. Branstadter.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I'm not in support of the amendment as it's proposed because I think it goes too far. And it goes as far as it does, as my colleague says, primarily for the purpose of image. If we're going to ban, as we did four years ago, and as we are prepared to do tonight, and as I think we could do even a little bit more than is proposed tonight, it should be based on something that we perceive is actually going to have a health benefit or mitigate a health risk. And, you know, and as I look at Lakewood Active Park, and you try to take these rules that we have and you try to apply it in Lakewood Active Park, well, there's about 50 square feet over in one corner of the park that don't fit inside this, and so someone could go over there and do that. That doesn't make sense. It's better to take a small park like that and say, in small parks, like Lakewood Active, like Oak Brook Park, things like that, that you would say, it's an entire park-type rule because most of the park is this. But on the other hand, I don't see the secondhand smoke health risk associated with someone that is in a relatively isolated place in a solitary point of a park the size of Fort Stellicum or Harry Todd, to be able to go and do that. There you go as far as this amendment does, is you're just taking people who, you know, there are some... Most of the people who are, I would say, irrevocably addicted to tobacco use are of some of our older generations. But they're not like, we have a lot of discussions about addiction and people being addicted to things that are illegal, you know. Here we have folks. But by going as far as the amendment does, we're exactly excluding those folks from our park system in its entirety, to be able to go and do that. So, you know, so I'm not in favor of the amendment to the point of that it includes all the parks. That, you know, as I spoke with my colleague earlier today, I would say that there's probably the 10 or 11 smallest parks in our system, the ones that are six acres or less. That would make sense to me to say, those are small enough that it's not really realistic to carve them up the way that we have in our current rules. And I'd be open to making those parks places that are non-smoking areas. But not, but to also go to the whole thing and say that we're following the lead of, I just don't, I don't smoke myself, but I don't count myself amongst those folks that say, "I don't smoke, so I don't believe anybody else should be able to." So I'm going to vote against the amendment that I, in fact, if we don't pass this amendment, would propose a future amendment that would ban parking in parks that are six acres or less. And I think that would move us in a positive direction, help on the enforcement side in terms of, the police wouldn't need to tape measure in some of our smaller parks to be able to go and figure out if our person's standing. But that's where I stand on the amendment, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Moss.
I have a question. Have we gotten complaints about smoking in the parks recently with the current ordinance?
I would say the complaints that we receive, and it's not overwhelming. I think people take care of those issues out in the park on their own. But the complaints that we get are when people are smoking in the playground because they're over chips, wood chips. Sometimes we get complaints during some larger special events because people walk through and you're standing at a booth or something. So more, that kind of, that kind of thing.
Thank you.
So as someone who has, in the deep, dark past, fought some fires that were caused by cigarettes, it has always concerned me. One thing we haven't talked about is the fire hazard that even one discarded cigarette can cause in an area like Fort Stellicum Park with dry grass and dry tree limbs and the like. And it would be a shame to lose that gem to something that could be, if not eliminated, at least deterred as a risk, just like you see no smoking signs at gas stations and Marina Fuel docks. No smoking on the dock. It's just a risk that can be mitigated.
Any other? Ms. Barre.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I have softened my stance on this over the last four years, I'm still not in favor of it because I think that it's being pretty hypocritical that we will allow alcohol. And I think that the results of alcohol in a park venue have more, give more trouble. I mean, that's been my experience. Standing next to somebody that's had one too many, or two too many, or three too many is more obnoxious to me personally than someone lighting up a cigarette. So the other thing, I think, is it's ridiculous to try and expect that our officers, our police officers, could even begin to enforce this. And lastly, I think Councilmember Branstadter, you talked about our elderly folks, that generation, are typically the people that are smoking. I think the younger people don't do that as much. And so we are going to slap restrictions on people that have paid for these parks over 20, 30, 40 years out of their tax money. And so I'm going to speak against it and see where it goes. Thank you.
Right. So detecting that there's some difference of opinion, call for the question. Madam Clerk, would you roll call, please?
Councilmember Moss.
Aye.
Councilmember Simpson.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Whalen.
Aye.
Councilmember Barre.
Nay.
Councilmember Bulkey. Councilmember Branstadter.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. The amendment is passed. We now move to the ordinance as amended. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posnay?
Nay.
One nay. Ordinance number 715 as amended passes. We now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council?
There is none, Mayor.
Any new business to come before the council?
No, Mayor.
Reports by the city manager, Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. I'd like to first start off with having our planning manager, Courtney Brunel, provide you an update on our business licensing services partnership that we have with the state. I think as the council member, this is a mandate from the state legislature that was put in place several years ago for all cities to go to one-stop shopping for business licensing. The impetus of this actually goes back around probably more than a dozen years now from the business community to have it again, all under one umbrella at the state level with the Department of Revenue. But with that, I'll have, turn it over to Ms. Brunel and have you give an update on where we are.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Members of the Council. This evening, as Mr. Caulfield pointed out, I am here to provide an update on the business licensing services partnership that the city launched in June 2018 with the Department of Revenue. This partnership was a result of Lakewood anticipating the approval of Executive House Bill 2005, which required all cities in Washington State to administer their business licenses through the state system by 2022. Prior to partnering, there were several perceived benefits for both the user and the city. For the user, they would only have to go to one place to apply and renew licenses, and the fees would all be paid at once for their annual license. And for Lakewood, the partnership would automatically, it was expected, add the city of Lakewood as an endorsement to any existing business that was registered through the state system but had not yet come in to apply for a city of Lakewood license. So we were anticipating that we would see additional licenses come in. Prior to partnering, the city had approximately 3,155 general business licenses that we transferred into the state system. As of July 19th, the total number of licenses had increased by 625 total to 3,780. However, in total, our staff has reviewed 1,546 new licenses since the state partnership. This includes all changes in ownership addresses as well as those new businesses. It was also anticipated that the partnership would reduce the staff time required to review and approve new licenses. Unfortunately, this has not been the case. And Lakewood business licenses are only issued if land use and building requirements are met. When we managed our licenses in-house, our permit technicians were able to work with applicants to ensure that they had all of the permits they needed prior to applying for their license. In addition, they were able to ask additional questions in order to gather additional information about the business itself to pass on to the review team. In the state system, we're frequently given really limited information, and so our review team has to reach out in order to get additional information about the business license in order to anticipate if they are going to need any types of land use or building permits. Another anticipated benefit to the BLS partnership was the revenue increase due to more business licenses being issued. Revenues have been less than what we expected, in part due to the state system of prorating licenses to come into the line with the state's renewal date. This way, all licenses have one renewal rather than multiple. So for example, if the city renewed, if the city license is up for renewal in September and their state license was up for renewal in January, so there is a four-month difference, the state would only charge the applicant a prorated $5 per month for the four-month term between that September and December, or January. And then in January, they would charge them the full $60 license renewal fee for the city in addition to the state's license renewal fee. And then they would renew annually in January for both licenses. Given the prorated rate, we have not seen the full revenue that this partnership is going to establish. And we probably won't until the end of 2019 once we've had a full capture of all of the regular business licenses coming in at that $60 rate. To end on a positive note, despite a rather lengthier review time, generally customers are positive and comment on how easy it is to register for licenses through the state system. Any questions?
Questions for Ms. Brunel. Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How are we, what can we do to ensure that the person requesting a license are given the information that they need to pursue?
So what we've done is, as a general rule of thumb, whenever we speak to anyone for licensing, we tell them, "The more information you can give us at the time of application, the better." And the state does provide a couple of fields for people to describe their business, but they do not require a minimum number of characters. And so, for example, we had a home occupation license come in, and the description was exotic frogs. That could mean a lot of things. So our review team has to reach out. We have submitted a change request form to BLS to request that they do require a minimum number of characteristics in that description field as well as an explanation that says the cities use this field in order to determine whether or not your business is being located at a suitable place. We have not heard back yet when that work item will be completed, but they do collect these change request forms from all agencies and incorporate it into their work plan.
Do we have a checklist for the majority of the ones that we normally get requests for?
No, we do not have a checklist.
That's one of the issues that I'm hearing in the community for people requesting licenses. They don't get the information upfront that they need these particular pieces. That's why I was asking the question. So thank you.
So without looking, because my fingers aren't quick enough, does our new revised website, under the provision I want to apply for a license or whatever, direct people to the state's website with a little bit of information so they can glean the one-stop-shop approach?
It does.
Okay, good.
Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Brunel, we embarked on this partnership with the state over a year ago. Ms. Brunel, we embarked on this partnership with the state over a year ago. And during that time, in the, in the city code, you know, chapter 5-02 that covers business licensing, we haven't amended that at all, even though some of the procedures and outcomes and processes that you described no longer match the code. So when you say that the state issues a Lakewood endorsement, but you also say they don't issue a license, or they don't issue the endorsement until they send it back to the city, and the city looks at it all and tells them to do that, what is the piece of paper when after a person goes to the state website and registers and applies for a business licenses and says, and I've got, I'm going to do a location, be in Lakewood, amongst other places, or exclusively? What do they, what does that license look like? And when do they, and what do they get when they're done with the state website? And what do they get when the city is all done with everything?
So it's one uniform application, so it's the regular state business license application. And if you submit the application in a paper copy, then what they'll do is, if the location is in Lakewood, Lakewood is automatically added as an endorsement. The same thing happens for a online application, which is the vast majority of the applications we receive. And all of them come online, but the paper versions are scanned in, and they input the data BLS, that BLS team does for us to review electronically. We also see the original application scanned in file. So when it's, when it happens online, there's two possibilities. If the individual is registered in Lakewood, puts in a Lakewood address, then Lakewood is automatically added as an endorsement. Or they can go in and select to add additional cities. So this would be, for example, a contractor who does work in Lakewood but isn't located in Lakewood. They can add the City of Lakewood as an endorsement. So businesses that are physically located here, as well as those that are intending to do work here, both have one uniform application, but those who aren't physically located here have to click an extra button saying that they want to add the City of Lakewood as an endorsement. So we review all of those applications. And once we have added our endorsement and activated the license, they get one printout that shows the standard business license, and it lists the endorsements. So for example, motor vehicle sales endorsement or a liquor license in addition to the City of Lakewood endorsement would all be displayed on a single piece of paper.
So I guess, so if I apply for a state license, and the state issues me a license, but I also want a Lakewood endorsement, I, on the date that I do that, I get the state license, but I don't have a Lakewood endorsement until later?
Correct. You get your state UBI number, but you don't receive your actual physical license until all of your endorsements are completed, including the City of Lakewood if you are physically located in Lakewood or select Lakewood as an added endorsement.
So in our code, when we say a business has to have a copy of their business license posted, that now means a state license with a Lakewood endorsement?
Correct.
In your, in your memorandum to us, you spoke about when new licenses are required. And you spoke about when a business changed location. Yet in our code, in the current existing Lakewood code, a change of location doesn't require a new license. It only requires informing the city that you have, you have an existing license, but you change your location within the city. You just have to inform us, but you don't have to get a new license. And and our code talks about submit, apply for your license on city forms and do some things. We also have a provision in our code that said that nonprofits, okay, have to apply for a license and get a license, but that it's a no-fee license. Is that worked into this system so that a nonprofit that applies for a business license, that their Lakewood endorsement doesn't cost them anything?
Yes.
And then we have a provision that said that vendors at things like the farmer's market or the Summerfest don't require a business license. And yet this year, first year of this, the application for vendors at Summerfest included a block where they had to identify and list their business license. Is that somehow related to our changing over to the state system of where we are saying you don't have to have a city license, but you've got to have a state license? Or what was the intent there?
Not to my knowledge. I'd have to discuss it with parks. I know that for our farmer's market, we did continue to exempt those folks from needing a city license, so I'm not sure with Summerfest.
And lastly, there was a provision in our code that gave the city manager authority to waive the requirement for a license for certain things of a civic nature. And has that been affected by this fixing over? Or do we, do we still have that provision where a person can contact the city and ask for a waiver of the requirement for a business license because their activities are civic in nature? And get a decision one way or the other?
We've not encountered that since the partnership, to my knowledge.
So is there a proposed schedule to do an update of chapter 502 on business licenses to reflect current processes and things?
Not yet. No.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caulfield.
Just a few updates, if I might. On August 1st last week, which was Thursday, if I recall, the application period for LTAC grants opened. And the applications are due from interested parties on Wednesday, August 21st, close of business at 5:00 PM, no later than. The LTAC committee will then review and make a recommendation to the city council in September. And then the city council will review LTAC's recommendations and consider your action in the month, the month of November. The Lakewood Community Foundation Fund has initiated the Third Annual Larry Saunders Service Award. If you recall, the first award was given in 2018 to Diane Formosa, who's founder of Caring for Kids. And last year, the award was given to the Lakewood Rotary Club. Also with the award comes a separate grant from the Lakewood Community Foundation that selected by the award winner to be awarded to a Lakewood organization. Both the award and grant will be presented at the first regular council meeting in 2020, as occurred in the last, in the last couple of years. So if you know of any interested either individuals or deserving individuals or organizations, the Lakewood Community Foundation is accepting applications and nominations there. Last week, we had our exit conference with the state auditor's office, and I'd like to commend our Assistant City Manager for Administrative Services, Taya Kraus, and her team, as well as our department directors and all of our staff, and of course, the leadership of the mayor and the council. Long story short, we came away with, once again, a very, very clean audit. No findings. Once again, the state auditor's office was very, very complimentary of how we are good stewards of the taxpayers' resources and ratepayers as well. The Salary Commission, so the good news is we now have three confirmed applicants. We need two more. And we're hoping to be able to get two more in time for the next week or two so that we can come forward with a slate for council consideration based on the mayor's recommendation as part of your next regular meeting on August, August 19th. Last Friday, a team from the City of Lakewood, we met with Major General Dougherty over at Camp Murray. And the purpose of the conversation was twofold. One, to talk about the annexing Camp Murray into the City of Lakewood, as well as a part of that, potentially making improvements down at the boat launch. Actually, we weren't expecting General Dougherty to attend the meeting. However, he wanted to be there. And the purpose of him being there was to give direction to his team that, number one, his finance folks work collaboratively with our finance team on developing a annexation analysis. And then secondly, for his facility folks to work with our Parks and Recreation Department, particularly Mary Dodsworth, on some ideas and options there. The general wanted to reiterate what he had told Mayor Anderson and myself a couple of years ago. That is something they would be open to, but again, it needs to be advantageous to Camp Murray and the state of Washington. And then most importantly, it cannot cost them more money. They're on a very, very limited budget from the state, and they just don't have the resources to pay additional fees and taxes and things like that. And so we communicated that. We heard that loud and clear. There was also talk from his staff that perhaps the general himself had the ability to okay an annexation. However, after some further discussion from some of his other staff, particularly his legal counsel, it was determined that it would have to go to the state legislature, and they would have to consider some kind of a proviso, some language to do that. But in the end, the general said, if it can come together in a favorable standpoint, it would be something that him and his team would consider. So very good meeting, and we'll continue to follow this, and I'll keep you appraised of what's happening there. Some Public Works updates. So the Veterans Drive Project, that proposal, we're at 30% design, as well as our recommendation based on the community outreach. We'll be coming forward at your study session next Monday. And in advance of that, if it's not, I think it's already in there, actually. The Public Works Engineering Department placed a long map of what the conceptual plan is in that conference room, the Gravity Lake Drive Conference Room. So it'll be there between now and Monday for you to take a look at, because it is big, so sending it electronically just doesn't make sense. And then we'll have it out here on the wall for your study session on Monday as well. In addition, Paul Busic, our Public Works Director, has reached out to the cities of Tacoma and University Place, as well as Pierce County, about a road that is owned by all four of our entities, and that is Lakewood Drive from 74th all the way up to 56th. And, you know, eventually, we have an interest in redoing our section of that roadway as part of, you know, improvements along Custer between Bridgeport and 74th. But we also think there could be an opportunity for four agents, for our four agencies to partner to make improvements within that corridor as well. Mr. Busic also reports that our contractor, Quadateknix, applied the Milfoil application on American Lake last Thursday. It went very, very well. They got it all done in one day because it was a very calm day, so there weren't any waves and any wind or anything. So it's all been put in place. And so of course, next steps now will be to monitor what the results are there. And hopefully, it will make, it will, it will take care of that invasive, invasive species. Also, Sound Transit, if you recall, we applied for some system access funding. And that is a pot of money that they have made within the various subareas of their service area in Pierce, Snohomish, and King Counties. And our project, 111th, 112th Street Improvements from Bridgeport up to about 111th in that, on 112th from Bridgeport up to 111th, rated number one in Pierce County and highly recommended through their process. So they're going to do some additional community outreach, and then ultimately, it'll come before the Sound Transit Board for their review and consideration. So knock on wood, we'll be able to get some funding to make those improvements. Curbs, gutters, sidewalks, and streetlights. On 112th from Bridgeport to about where, then it turns into 111th, and then kind of zigs up to about Kendrick or so. And the purpose would be to connect into Kendrick into the back of the Sounder Station, Councilmember. The Planning Commission has a lot of work. I just wanted to point out two key initiatives that they're working on. Of course, Title 18A, which has been going on for a long, long time. However, we're ready to bring it forward to the Planning Commission for their review and then ultimately, recommendation. That kicks off this month, in the month of, in the month of August. And their review process, we're tentatively estimating will run through about October, though at the end of the day, it's their prerogative. And then ultimately, it will come back to this body in the November, December, January timeframe. Likewise, the 2020 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Docket is going to open for private property owners to submit applications. That will kick off on August 12th, so next Monday, and will run for a month through September 13th. The Planning Commission will then make their review and recommendation to you in terms of which ones to move forward. Then ultimately, you as a legislative body will have the final say on not only which ones to move forward, but perhaps any complane amendments that you would like to initiate as the city, the city council. Last week, we were contacted by Pierce Transit. They are interested in an autonomous vehicle pilot program, so driverless cars here in Lakewood. I think they might be looking at some other cities within their service area as well. This is something that their CEO had mentioned to me several months ago. And I did say, well, first of all, we did provide a letter of support because they're pursuing a federal grant. It's estimated a cost in the neighborhood of upwards of $2 million. 20% of the funding would be provided by Pierce Transit and WashDOT to the tune of about $400,000, and then the grant's about $1,000,500. So what we have communicated at Pierce Transit is, again, we're, you know, we'll provide a letter of support. We'll talk with you. Our Public Works folks and some other city staff met with their team last week. But from a policy standpoint, you know, we communicated, we don't have any money, number one. They said, nope, no problem. We got it covered. Number two, if you're going to be operating driverless vehicles, and by the way, as a pilot program, they expect to actually have somebody in the vehicle monitoring it. I don't have an answer to the question why on that other than they want to make sure something doesn't go sideways as they're testing the program. By the way, I don't think it's just cars. I think they're looking at maybe small buses of some sort. But what I did communicate to them is that they're going to, either they or the company that they contract with to do this work, or the state of Washington, my recommendation is that they fully indemnify the city for the use of our public right-of-way, including maybe some kind of a franchise agreement or something, something along those lines. And then really, the last item was, you know, how are you going to roll this out to the public and communicate, you know, this, you know, this proposal? And certainly, we're willing to help, you know, with public outreach and communication to the Lakewood community. So we'll see where it goes. It's not a slam dunk that they'll get the grant, but it looks like a good partnering effort. And so we'll stay in our lane, and they'll stay in their lane, and no pun intended there.
Long as it's not a rollover as part of the rollout.
Roger that, Deputy Mayor. The, the CDBG five-year consolidated plan. Right now, we're finishing up the last year of the five-year plan from 15, no, 14 through 19. So the next five years will be from 2020 to 2024. Quite frankly, we had hoped to have been in front of you this month on that proposal. However, we do that in partnership with the City of Tacoma. They're a little bit behind, so long story short, that's probably going to come forward to you for your review, your consideration, your input, your feedback, probably the latter part of October. So I just wanted to give you a courtesy, courtesy heads up on that, that that's what's happening there in terms of a timeline. Also, some other good news. You might recall a call that Ms. Dodsworth applied for some Pierce County conservation monies in support of acquisition of some environmentally sensitive property around the Ward Lake Park area. And so our application ranked fifth out of 12 applications based on a review and recommendation by the county's Citizen Advisory Board. It will now go to the city council, Pierce County Council, rather, through their process. So again, knock on wood. Hopefully, we'll be able to obtain the funding to be able to acquire that environmentally sensitive property and then also expand towards Lake Park. PSRC is continuing their Vision 2050 Plan. At their July Growth Management Policy Board, the board, the GMPB, made some edits and made a recommendation on a fully drafted plan to the, to the full board. And that's expected to be, actually, that was put out for public comment beginning on July 19th. Comment period is open until September 16th. PCRC, of which I know several of you sit on that, are going to be considering a letter to send on from a regional standpoint at your August 15th meeting. And then likewise, the City of Lakewood is also considering, looking at sending a letter. And once we have some drafts of those, we'll, we'll, we'll share that with you. Also, just a friendly Also, just a friendly reminder that unless you want, you know, city staff to occupy both of these positions, but the city of Tacoma Tide Flats Subarea Plan Advisory Group, you know, Tiffany Spear, our planning manager for special projects, we've identified her as the alternate. But we need a primary, and I think the council was hoping that it would be an elected official. So, I just need, you know, need to tell me who it is, and we'll pass that on to the city of Tacoma. Again, the deadline is August 30th. So, end of this month on that. Also, I'm pleased to report that, in addition to the town of Stillicum, the city of DuPont, West Pierce Fire and Rescue, the city of Tacoma has adopted a resolution similar to the city of Lakewood regarding the NTSB findings and recommendations from a couple of months ago. And the Pierce County Council is expected to also consider a similar resolution at their August 27th meeting. So, some good news there. As far as your calendar goes, so tomorrow is National Night Out. And there's three signed up neighborhood, I'm sorry, 30 signed up neighborhood groups. And I know the city clerk provided you a list of those groups, as well as if you've decided to ride along with somebody from our police department, who that is. And then, of course, on Thursday, our summer concerts in the park continues. So, the next three will be on August 8th, the 15th, and the 22nd. And then, Partners for Parks is going to have a bingo night, Bingo Barn Night, on Friday, September 6th, at 6:00 PM at the McGavick Center. And the purpose of that is to begin raising money to help restore the H Barn at Fort Stillicum Park. So, they always seem to do really cool and fun events. So, and of course, you've all been extended an invitation there. So, with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Mr. Branstad?
Thanks, Mayor. Mr. Caulfield, could you just elaborate a little bit on Camp Murray's position of it won't cost us any money? You know, were they looking at that in, across a whole group of line items and say, none of these line items can cost us any money? Or are they looking at it more holistically of saying, in total, it not costs us any money?
So, they were looking at that solely from, apparently, there was a report done back in 2010 or 11 or 12 that showed that Camp Murray would have to pay, and this is the number they've mentioned, $70,000 more. It would have a $70,000, there would be a $70,000 increase in their budget to be part of the city of Lakewood than to stay as unincorporated Pierce County. So, that's specifically what they're referencing. And so, again, the purpose of our two finance teams getting together is to make sure that we're on the same frequency on, you know, how that all comes together. But also, looking at, OK, how can we, you know, address that? And how do we, you know, maybe get into an annexation agreement that it is a, you know, zero-sum game, or at least a zero-sum game for Camp Murray? Or perhaps, annexing is a cost saver for them? And so, that's what we want to look at.
So, I note, I think that before Mr. Caulfield, I met with General Lowenberg at least one time.
That was before my term.
Yeah. And then, we met with General Dougherty. And the consistent theme has been it's a zero-sum game. And it's principally related to utility tax, which is the biggest single line item that would increase. County doesn't have a utility tax. Cities do. They say, we don't have any money to pay that, because we're principally federally funded. And that's pragmatic, and the state has cut their equivalent of a general fund budget. And they don't have any way to squeeze extra dollars out of that. They're deferring maintenance. So, come up with a zero-sum game and tell us how it's advantaged, and we'll go with it.
Mr. Whalen?
Thanks for the report. I had a question on an unrelated item, but related to Public Works. Decoven has a lot of work, including around our new little mini roundabouts that we did work on. I know that it's another utility provider doing a bunch of street work, but the street is really looking torn up. So, I just want to know what the plan is for whatever overlay repair these guys plan to do down the road.
So, I think that's the gas company. So, they're doing significant upgrades there. And so, what you see out there, those are temporary patches.
Right.
And so, they have to settle. And then, once they're, you know, once they settle and they're inspected and good to go, and then, you know, there'll be a half-street overlay throughout that corridor.
Be a half-street?
That's correct. That's my understanding. Because that's what our code requires.
Yeah.
That's correct. Including, you know, they have to mitigate and address, you know, if they damaged any of our new traffic circles that we put in place. And I looked at them this weekend, and they're really close. But they haven't, yeah, they haven't quite gotten there yet.
Right.
So, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see how well the overlay is done, because it's kind of, you know, lipstick on a pig a little bit. It was a pretty nice street, and now they're...
That's a temporary, when they do that trenching like that, you know. Normally, it's a big, it's a big project for them. But they have a number of, you know, connections to make. I believe it is gas. I'm almost positive, because it's the company based out of, they're actually here in Lakewood. Patello or, no, Infasource. It keeps changing. It keeps changing.
It was one of the nicer neighborhood streets that had not been torn up.
Well, it'll get new pavement now.
Infasource purchased a local company.
Yeah, it keep changing.
It was Gary Tousie.
Ms. Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to pass on compliments that I received from some of the citizens of the Repatchon-Custer Road. They were really impressed with the way it was done and the less corruption that it caused as going down by John Dowell School. They were really impressed. They talked to the supervisor of the project, and they were just totally impressed with how they communicated and the work that they did. So, I wanted to pass that on to you.
And I will pass that on, council member. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Caulfield? And we move to council comments. Ms. Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. As you know, I was the honorary commander for Colonel Furman. He retired, so I attended his retirement last week. So, I'm now an alumni for the honorary commander program. So, not as exciting, but good. I also attended the chamber luncheon where our city manager did the presentation. He did an outstanding job. I was very impressed with the results and the comments that were made afterward. And then, following that, I attended the roundtable discussion that they had in University Place. And it was overwhelming, the comments that came, that may, council, I mean, city manager Gunn Caulfield was number one in their book, even though they didn't live in Lakewood. They appreciated the comments they made. One of the things that was very much talked about was the fact that you fought forward, the comments that affordable housing is needed, but we need to take care of what we have now. That was huge. So, just wanted to share that with you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bulkey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things went to the, a little bit less attended at the Thursday night music at the park, but it was still very nice and a very nice night and a good crowd. The Beatles one, I think, is incredibly, was incredibly popular. So, that is hard to top that. I think we have reggae this week, so that'll be neat. And then, I'm looking forward to National Night Out. I'm really glad to hear on both the Sound Transit stuff, because I know we go back and forth with them on certain things, but that they're still interested in investing in Lakewood and especially in regards to that neighborhood down there that needs that, those pedestrian amenities. And I'm also excited about the Conservation Futures one, and that'll give us a chance to really make a plan, I think, for Wards Lake Park. Because I think we're going to have to have some discussions about it just because of the situation there with the homeless and people. So, once we get that other portion, we've got a pretty big park there now, or we have a pretty big open space. And I think we're going to have to have some future discussions about how that park should look and how we're going to handle that. To dovetail with Council Member Moss's remarks on housing, I think I forwarded the city manager and at least two of you that, and I'm happy to know that we're going to have a discussion about the 1406 money, that the state of Washington, the legislature, allows us a portion of their sales tax. And I've been thinking about it for a while. And we can just stay in with the county, or we can go on our own. And so, I'm looking forward to having a discussion about that, in regards to that. So, that's all I've got.
Mr. Branstad?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I thought that the evening, meeting this evening actually did well speaking to our strategic plan, and particularly, the parts of the strategic plan that were assigned to the city council. Where in the strategic plan, we are the element of the city that is responsible for strengthening our relationship with the school district. And I was glad to hear that the school board shares that goal as we move through 2019 and 2020, a period of time of our plan to do that. And taking a look at how some of the things that we discussed might come out of that strengthening, might, how they're developing as we talk, to look, to do that. That there was, and then, of course, and then, we've, with greeting Representative Kildoff, you know, we only assigned ourselves six tasks in the strategic plan, you know. And one was to deal with the legislature and build strong relationships. The other was with the school district. And the third one that came to mind, because we were dealing with the legislature, was we, one of the six was to actively advance condominium reform. And that was actually something that took place in the last legislative session. I gotta admit, it sort of, we sort of did that without noticing. We did include it in our legislative policy agenda to be able to go and do that. But that, as we talk about housing at a future meeting, including, is there something in the condominium reform that wasn't acted that we should look at trying to leverage to try to bring more middle-class families and housing options to Lakewood to be able to go and do that? Mr. Mayor, I've testified on a number of times that Tacoma, on the Tide Flats interim regulations and things. And I'm willing to represent the city on that advisory group if there's a need for someone to meet once a quarter or so on that. Okay, whatever. I'm willing to do that. However, I will not arm wrestle any of the other members of the council that want it, would like to do it.
He didn't even have to miss the meeting to be nominated. Is there anyone else who'd like to arm wrestle? Councilmember Branstad for that.
Get a chance to weigh in on it in my role on the EDB, economic development board. So, it's probably good to have a second voice in there.
Yeah, I'm back-channeling the county exec's office, so it can't be me. But I have an opportunity for input, too, so.
Okay.
By affirmation.
Okay, and in a similar vein, I've been representing the city on the Public Facilities District Board that relates to the Convention Center in Tacoma. I'm the only city that has an elected representative on that board. Fife, University Place, Tacoma, all have others, because the state law changed and said, members of those boards should not be elected officials. But that if your charter called, allowed for elected officials, you were sort of grandfathered in to allow you to have elected officials. But that board is actively pursuing a charter change, particularly so that they can add DuPont into the district and thus draw some sales tax revenue that comes out of DuPont and perhaps Pualup into the funding that goes to that. My appointment technically expires December 31st. And I think that this may be a good juncture for us to go out and look to see if we have someone from our, within the city, who is in the tourism or hospitality sector that may want to be the city's representative on that board, which meets quarterly, to be able to go and do that. So, if that can be something, because if we're going to go for a citizen representative, then we need a little bit more lead time than just talking about it at the first meeting in January, needing to decide to do it and go through an application process. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, that was my immediate thought. I think that's a good suggestion. I, we have sometimes differing interests than the Tacoma-centric folks. And we have more hotels out here now. So, the interests of what they, their targets sometimes with respect to the path of the Convention Center are different than we might pick. So, I think it's good to have someone who is in, has their finger on the pulse of economic development aspect of the facilities. Maybe we put out for applications. We're the outlier, it appears. But remember, your appointment isn't for a term or until you're replaced, I think, is the way generally.
But parole boards are supposed to meet every so often.
It's an indeterminate sentence. We have staff look into what we have to do to reappoint. I frankly ignore any of the rules or the terms of the term. So, have somebody figure that out and see what we should do. In the meantime, don't let them move the Convention Center to a different county.
Ms. Barth?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I did attend with a couple of other council members and deputy mayor, the Arts Council Roundtable where we met with the artist. And it was really a fascinating interaction. So, I'm excited to see what she brings back to the table. Were there 12 people, I think, 12 different ideas, but yet, kind of a common goal? So, we wanted it to be a welcoming piece of artwork. And I'm excited to see what she brings back to the table. Also, I have the assignment for Clover Park School Board next week, and I have a conflict. Is there anybody that can take that? Okay, thank you, Mr. Simpson. I appreciate that. That's it.
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Speaking of Clover Park School District, and to dovetail off of Mr. Branstad's remarks, it's been my observation over the last several months in dealing with members of the school board in various capacities, that there seems to me to be a more, a spirit of cooperation. I'd be the first to say that several years ago, I wouldn't, I couldn't envision myself saying what I just said. But I have, I've gotten the feeling that there is a little more, we'll listen to what the city, where the city council has to say, a little more cooperation out of them. Secondly, was it Tuesday, last Tuesday, city clerk, that we had the children here from Christ Lutheran? Was it Wednesday? Yeah, I wanted to thank the city clerk for the work she did in coordinating all that. We had, I think, 13 or 14, what, eight, seven, eight, nine-year-olds out here. We had, I think, 13 or 14, what, eight, seven, eight, nine-year-olds out here. And I was sitting in here with Mary Dodsworth. And she comes in, sits down next to me and says, now remember, no philosophy, no big words, there are only eight, John. So. I'll remember that when I, so, but it was really, it was, I, I'm just telling you, city clerk, if you get those requests, I'm available from seven on up, I'm good, because I just leave the philosophy at home. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bulkey?
I don't think there's been a defined date yet. There is a direction and an intention that she does for round two with that group. And I would hope that it's sooner than later, but I would assume two weeks. Yeah. Yeah, I don't recall exactly what date we set, but we'll circulate that to everyone who attended. We took in attendance, I believe. Did we set a date? I, I, if we did, I don't recall. Okay, perfect. There you go. Let me check. Yep, you're right. It is. It's on the calendar.
Mr. Whalen?
Sure. I did attend with several folks here, the Colonial Plaza Public Art Meeting. I just want to echo the comments, think it was a good meeting. It was probably a good process to be had. There were a few folks, not just from the Arts Commission, but there was one former member from the redevelopment advisory board, who's also a local property owner in town, and I invited him. He appreciated coming, so that's always a good thing, to get a wider, wider bit of opinion on such matters. Tuesday night, tomorrow night, I will be doing the National Night Out with members of the group. I think I'm assigned to Chris Westby that evening, so that'll be a good chance to get out to the community. On Wednesday, speaking of the Clover Park School District, I was asked and I accepted the opportunity to go to their poverty immersion class, which is going to be led by, I don't know if it's a regional or national group or speaker, but it's a select group of community folks that are going through this to get some empathy for what a lot of kids in our district experience. And so I'll attend and hopefully not take too many billable hours out of my day, or I might join the ranks. But I think it will be a good event and I'll certainly report back what I learn and, and what I observe. I'm meeting on Thursday with the new director of Emergency Food Network. She is new to the area, taken over obviously from Helen McGovern, is interested in learning more about Lakewood, because that's the city of, of her business's operation. And she wanted to pick my brain about all things Lakewood. So again, if there's something of interest to report back, I'll do so next week. That's it.
Thank you. Well, I wasn't as active on city things last week as usual, because I had a family in town for a wedding in the weekend, which went really well. But earlier in the week, it was because I spent two days attending a continuing legal education seminar in, at Seattle University on, of all things, export restrictions and cybersecurity and the international trade world. Given that Washington is so trade-dependent, we have four sister cities in the Pacific Rim, cybersecurity is a major issue. And it's a long time since I studied international business in the 1970s. So it was fascinating, concerning, learned a lot. I'm actually tentatively set up to meet with one of the presenters, who's a woman who worked at Camp Murray for five years and is associated with the University of Washington about, and she's more the career track person. There are so many careers, tracks open in cybersecurity. It's probably going to be the largest, I could say, technical professional employment opportunity in the country for years to come. There are currently 350 known vacant jobs at an average salary of $108,000 a year. And they think it's, the need is actually higher because people don't know they need people yet. And also because the job openings are underreported, because if you're a major company that nicks, needs six cybersecurity people, you don't put that out in public, because the bad guys look at it and say, hey, there's a weakness, we'll exploit it. There are FBI agents there, Boeing people there. So that was one aspect of it. And I, I, I learned a lot, that touched on a lot of things I do in different parts of my life. One of those is transportation, confirming that I made the right decision when I came back from overseas and decided not even to look for a job in Seattle. Two round trips, had plenty of time to calculate. It was 172 miles, those two mile, two round trips to Seattle U. It took a total of 8.5 hours portal to portal, which is almost exactly 20 miles per hour average. It reinforced the need to develop land use and planning policies that put jobs where people are, rather than trying to figure out how to get people to where the jobs are. That's the solution, because there just isn't enough space. As by virtue of being on the Pierce Transit Board, I have a complimentary ORCA card. I tried to figure out a way to get there on public transportation before and on the days in between, after that frustrating experience that some people do every day. And we take two hours and 10 minutes on somebody else's schedule and include a train ride, a walk, two bus rides and another walk, because Seattle U is on First Hill and, and up there is not in, in, in the path. So kind of transitioning from that, looking at BRT 2, which Pierce Transit is exploring. I will continue to be an advocate for planning an option that serves our underserved areas of Springbrook, Woodbrook, Stillicum, and then on to the base, which is the major employer. If you look at public transit's true charter, it's to do two things. It's to get people to and from work on the full fare paying basis, or the less subsidized basis, I should say, and is a lifeline service for people who are economically disadvantaged or have physical disabilities, prevent them from driving. And I can't think of a better route extending from Lakewood Town Center or whether, or the, the Lakewood Station where they would normally end than, than hitting our underserved areas on their way to the base. You hit both of those needs, and I think we'd be missing out if we didn't consider that. Also think it's kind of amusing that we're having a pilotless pilot program. The, I don't know how they got there. But I'll, I'll continue to advocate for, for that being included as an option. It's not a staff preference, because they're looking at how much it would cost to build out. And there are other options that maybe you don't have to build out to JBL, you just have to create the stop. And then it's a bus, it can run down the HOV lane to get to the main gate. What else is there? Oh, we, please take a look at the volunteers to fill one of the three spots on the American Lake Management District Board. We have 10, 11 applicants. I know several of them, but I would like your input, who you think could be the, the most engaged and reasonable people to do that. It's nice to have, I think there are more than three qualified people on there, which is always nice. But then I, I don't want to miss an opportunity to sign up someone who would be engaged and qualified. A week would be great. That's all I had, and there's a need for an executive session tonight. We will now recess into executive session for approximately 10 minutes pursuant to RCW 4231101, to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency or a member acting in its official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge concerning the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. Counsel is not expected to take any action following the executive session other than to adjourn. We are in recess for 10 minutes to executive session at 9:00 AM, at 9:00 PM.